The May 17, 2023, regular planning board meeting is called to order at 6:31. This is to advise that the revised notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known agenda of the subject meeting was promptly posted in the public place reserved for such or similar announcements on May 3, 2023, and transmitted to the Times, Princeton, Packet, and the West Windsor Plains Row News on May 3, 2023, and filed with township clerk on May 3, 2023. Cindy, please call the roll.
Mr. Patel? Mr. Lovero? Mr. Shichtel?
Here.
Ms. Panko? Mr. Panko? Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Bari? Ms. Applegate? Councilwoman Givers? Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman?
Here.
Chairman Carr?
Here, thank you. Okay. I'd like to open it up to the public to speak, if you'd like to, on non-agenda, non-pending items. If you'd like to, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and state whatever you want to talk about.
Michael. I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was... Sorry about that, my bad, my bad. Forgive me.
No problem. Okay, nobody from the public has stepped up, so we'll go on to the minutes for April 12th and April 19th. Any changes, amendments, comments on the minutes from those dates?
Yeah, on the April 12th?
Yep.
Towards the bottom where it says March 1, 2023.
Wow, there's a 22.
I think that's a typo, 2022 down there. Says Mr. Shichtel made a motion to approve the March 1, 2023.
Cindy, you have that?
Got it.
Okay.
The other thing on page 3, 1, 2, 3, 4th line up. The full sentence is, as a member of the public, she agreed that public comment should be included in the resolution and should be clearly noted so the public knows when they can comment. I think it means agenda. We were talking about the agenda, not the resolution.
I wasn't at that meeting, I'm not sure.
Where on the sheet does it get limited?
Page 3, it's...
Four lines from the bottom.
Fourth line from the bottom. Public comments should be included in the...
Yes, we were talking about the agenda.
Any agenda?
Yeah.
Anyone want to comment on any other comments on the 12th? Why don't we do comments on the 19th and we can vote on both at the same time? Oh, sorry, I've been advised that we need to vote on this because the people voting will be different. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the April 12, 2023 meeting minutes as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Simon, second by Linda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays, abstains? I abstain. Annis abstains and Michael Carpus abstains.
Me too.
Yes, I got Annis.
What's the final tally then?
It's...
One?
Six yes to...
Yes.
Thank you, Sam. Okay, any changes, amendments to April 19, 2023 meeting minutes?
Yeah, at the bottom, under my, I guess, my Affordable Housing Committee comments. The third line from the bottom says, there is a proposal that suggests recertification every three years. That's fine. However, the tenant would not have the option of not participating if there is a concern they are no longer qualified. I think that the way it was supposed to work is the tenant would have the option of not participating if there is a concern they are no longer qualified. So if they felt that they're no longer qualified, they could decide that they don't want to take that... They don't want to fill out the paperwork for the extra $100 a month subsidy that they get. So it's just, I think what you'd read, the tenant would not have, would have the option of not participating.
Yeah, Linda, on that sentence, there's too many negatives, so can we, how can we clean that up?
Well, I was going to take the not, I know. I was going to...
There's three negatives in that sentence.
Well, the tenant would...
I take that verbatim.
Okay.
No, but then it makes sense if what she says, however, the tenant would have the option of not participating if there's a concern that they no longer qualify.
Okay, just take the one not out.
Yeah.
After the word, after the word would not.
Yes, that's...
That's not...
Yes.
This not right here is removed. Thank you.
Anything else?
The company, BXP, is that, I guess, lowercase, not capitalized, BXP? That's on the second page.
Yeah, I think it's capitalized.
It's capitalized?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
I got that off their business card. It was lowercase. It was lowercase, yeah.
And I remember the graphic they had that evening, they had lowercase.
Okay, I just wanted to double check.
The graphics.
What else? Okay, my comments on page 3 says, Councilwoman Givers asked Attorney Mueller about the definition of hardship in the floodplain ordinance. Since we had, I'll check here, we had looked at the... What I wanted to say is, Councilwoman Givers asked Attorney Mueller about the, and then add a newly added definition of hardship from the DEP in the floodplain ordinance because council had introduced the ordinance, that it was coming, I think we reviewed it, but in the interim, the DEP sent the township some new definition of hardship that had additional wording. So there was a question of whether that new wording would have to come back to the planning board. So I think that night we were advised, no, but in fact tonight, we are reviewing it, so...
I don't know about if we're reviewing it, other than we're just gonna, you know, discuss, well, there's a resolution on it, yeah.
Yeah.
She's talking about that one...
That one night where we reviewed it, but we didn't, planning board did not have the reintroduced version at that point, because it's just the time lapse there. So I was just going to say, Councilwoman Givers asked Attorney Mueller about the newly added definition of hardship from the DEP. And then continue on, that sounds... Because it's the DEP that was making this change.
Everybody's okay with that language?
Okay. Okay.
So it's not like this would delay the timetable for ordinance review for this?
After the planning board discussed it on council referral at the last meeting, DEP got back to the township staff, the township engineer, with some additional changes to the definition and additional verbiage. So the council had to reintroduce, and they're referring it back to us to talk about that one minor change.
And that's where we're at right now.
Hopefully very shortly.
Yeah, very short.
It's going to be, it's going to be a short discussion.
Please.
All right, so that goes it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, entertain a motion to accept the April 19 meeting minutes as amended.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, motion by Simon and second by Linda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstains?
Abstain.
Okay, Alan abstains, Annis abstains. And...
Mr. Shichtel?
Yes, Pankas will abstain also. Okay, so that's how many, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and then...
50.
Right. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Liaison reports. Annis, anything to this?
Yes, I have a report here. Last meeting on the EC Commission held last Thursday, May 11th, I have the public comment before the general meeting, a fellow scout presented a project on the problems of the fashion fast design trend. People buy clothing for a few uses and then throw it away, wasting resources and adding to the landfills. Alternatives of longer lasting clothing and using, recycling, recycling, and upcycling were discussed. West Windsor Community Park Gardens, Stephen Parat and Paula Ball have been maintaining the pollinator and rain gardens. Demonstration gardens in Trinity Park, planning is underway for a new project to build various demonstration meadows and pollinator gardens in the, in another section of the park. There will be a call for volunteers when they are ready to break ground and plants. Master Plan Conservation Aliments is being worked out on a subgroup along with them then, and will be presented to the full EC when ready. Township Council Andrea Mandell discussed the change in the newly introduced for plan management regulation that was previously reviewed by the commission. Energy Efficiency Larry Katz presented on energy rebate programs and information we uploaded to the website. He also discussed new developments in community solar. The state is finalizing the official program which has been in a large beta test. It is expected there will be more opportunities to produce and purchase community solar. Fireworks, Indersing presented the environmental impact of fireworks and potential ways to reduce the impact by limiting fireworks, holding them away from environmentally sensitive areas, and using alternatives. This is seen as more of an issue in New Jersey with the general legalization of some forms of fireworks. Greening Together Arbor Day, the Environmental Commission held their section of the Massacre County Sustainability Coalition, Greening Together as part of the Arbor Day event held by this shade tree commission. They had several tables showing EC projects and providing information. Current green team projects being worked on by the Girl Scout volunteers, like spotted lanterns, flies, fast fashion, plastic pollution, and native pollinator plants. That's the...
Okay, thank you, Annis. I know Jordica's not here.
Yeah, the Affordable Housing Committee is not meeting in May.
Okay. Nothing there. Okay, next order of business, ordinance 2023-3 for plain management regulations. Now, we received the resolution where the change in definition for hardship was highlighted for us. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, we have a lot of other work to do, but, you know, I throw it out there for people, you know, to look at. So... Anything to discuss on the definition of hardship? Fran, anything to add on that?
Good evening. So, coordinates 2023, oh, 3. Just kidding. No, there's really nothing to add. My belief and request to the DEP was this additional language that they wanted to add was better served in the actual variance section, Article 42, because it doesn't do anything to add to the definition. To me, the language is more advisory to the people who would be reviewing variance, but DEP, I guess, had marching orders from FEMA, so the DEP representative came back and said that it's good to keep the reasoning within the definition, so it's apparent upfront to anybody who might be considering. So...
Okay.
I didn't feel like it was worth arguing that, and neither did the township attorney, so...
But it was strict language now.
Yes, it's pretty strict language, but again, a definition section, in my opinion, the use of the word, not the actual conditions of the variance, conditions of the variance should be defined in the variance section, again. I think we do. I'm okay giving them.
Yeah, the full wording of the hardship from the old wording that was in, plus this new language, is on page 14 of the ordinance. It's coming straight from the DEP. Do I particularly like the way it's worded? No, but I know that a lot of things in this ordinance are coming straight down, and we have to do it. I did check East Windsor, Robbins Hill, two other towns, and they had it in there too. So it's not like we're going to negotiate any changes. I don't particularly care for the way this is worded. Doesn't quite say what else, you know?
But it is what it is.
Yeah, it's one of those, so, you know. We need to do that.
Okay. Anything else on this? Okay.
On page 23?
Yeah.
I'm just curious about those two duplicates that I had pointed out. Are they going to be eliminated, or what's the deal since you have put them in brackets?
Yeah, they should be...
No, that's deleted, that bold and in square means deleted.
Be deleted?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, I think we had the corrections in here, right?
All right, so this is just like, the bracket shows that they're deleted.
It should probably be struck through. Page 2 says, language in brackets and struck through is being deleted, so...
If you look on page 3, there's a lot of strike threes.
Yeah.
So it's like the redlined version, but in black.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm advised by council that the planning board should vote on accepting the new language that's going to go into the ordinance. So I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, it's just, it would be recommendation back to the council that we find this consistent with the master plan, and we don't make any of the recommendations. Is this on, Sam?
Should be on.
You're on.
Jerry, also, we're going to need a memorandum from you to the township clerk and copy me on that.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to, I guess, is it accept, Jerry?
Well, we just find that there's no inconsistency.
No inconsistency.
And the board does not make any other recommendations.
I entertain a motion to accept this language as consistent with the master plan and no other findings that we need to introduce.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Alan, second by Simon. Please call the roll for this.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Shichtel?
Yes.
Mr. Panko?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Givers?
Yes.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman?
Yes.
Chairman Carr?
Yes. Motion carries eight, I think it's eight, right? Thank you. Okay, next order of business, master plan work session on the draft historic preservation plan element. Everybody has the draft in front of them, right? It's a very nice document. Good night, Fran.
You want to start?
Okay, David, you're up.
Sorry about that. Again, good evening, everybody. Tonight we'll be discussing the draft historic preservation element of the master plan. It is dated May 4, 2023. I say that with all of our work sessions, it's always important to note that this is a draft. Nothing is being adopted tonight, so this is really a starting point to solicit feedback. So you've heard this spiel from me before, but I would just like to provide a little bit of a background of what a master plan is. It's a comprehensive, long-term strategic development document, which is intended to guide the growth and development of a community. So it's essentially a roadmap. It identifies where Minutipality is and where it wants to be in the future. There's a couple mandatory contents of a master plan. We've got this before. You require a land use plan. You require a housing plan if you'd like to have a zoning ordinance, which most towns do. There are also a number of optional elements of a master plan. That can be anything from economic development to recreation, a downtown plan, circulation, community facilities, utilities, open space, or in this case, historic preservation. We have been updating the township's comprehensive master plan now for a couple of years. We've got through and completed several of those elements, and I'll just run through them right now. We have updated section 3, which is our land use plan. That was back in February of 2020. We had a great time updating the housing element and fair share plan. That was back in 2019. We updated our circulation plan in 2021, same with our utilities plan, actually on the same date, adopted December 15, 2021. We adopted a community facilities plan in October of 2022. We updated our open space and recreation plan. That was actually following the reexamination report, I believe, the first document that we've adopted. That was in November of 2018. We are currently working at section 9, which is conservation plan. We most recently updated our farmland preservation plan back on March of 2023 this year, as well as section 11, which is a relationship to other plans that was adopted back in February 2020. We are also working on a stormwater management plan, and we do have section 13, which is sustainability plan, but that is not on a short-term list right now to re-adopt. One of those sections that I have not listed was a historic preservation plan. This is actually going to be the first historic preservation plan element for this community. It is an optional element of the master plan. The municipal land use law identifies a few items that's required for a historic preservation element. You need to identify the location and significance of historic sites and districts, identify the standards used to assess the worthiness of historic sites and districts, and then analyze each impact, each impact of each component of the master plan on historic sites and districts. So the question is, why are we doing this? Coincidentally, I'm looking at that brand-new logo, and the first thing that is up there is the mill, which is one of our historic structures. So thank you for whoever pressed that in time for this meeting. We're doing this for a very similar reason why we adopted our farmland preservation plan as well, and it has to do something with the character of this community. So the township does have deep-seated historic roots. The township was officially incorporated in 1797, just making sure that seal got it right, but the history of the township of Windsor, which West Windsor was a part of beforehand, dates back to 1751, before the Revolutionary War. Before that, there were English and Dutch settlers on the land, and before that, Lenape. By the mid-19th century, West Windsor was essentially nine hamlets and 1,600 residents. Today, we're approaching 30,000 residents, and we're projecting even more. So while those years of growth have contributed to West Windsor being a very desirable place to live, you see it in your home prices, you see it in your school district ratings, it does pose a challenge to keeping and maintaining your historical assets. So this plan is a first step. It's identification of those assets, and then if the township chooses afterwards, you can act to protect those assets. So lends to the question, though, why are we doing this? There are a number of benefits of historic preservation. It does contribute to quality of life. It contributes to a sense of place. There are economic advantages. You can promote historic heritage tourism. It's an investment into a community. There are sustainability benefits of this by reutilizing existing structures and existing materials, coincidentally, similar with the mill, and obviously educational benefits as well. By understanding the past, you can better prepare for the future. So before we go into an overview of the report, I think it's really important to give credit to the Historical Society of West Windsor, who's in the audience tonight. Could not have done this without them, could not have done this without their work. Most of the information, if not all of the information contained in this report, came from their website, as well as a book they published on West Windsor history, which is a fascinating read, so I recommend everybody pick up.
Do you have a copy? There we go.
Perfect. It's a wonderful book. It's well-written. It's well-organized as well.
And I'd like to say that I really think each member of the planning board should have their own copy.
Oh, it's fascinating. It's really, really good.
But it's more than a coffee table book. It should be read.
No, and it's well-designed, too. It's got massive pictures. It really is very good. Our job was to take a lot of that information and put it into, and I hate this phrase, but I'm going to use it, a snackable size. It's something that people use in social media a lot, but basically to condense that information, because it is a lot of information, and organize that into a planning template, something that's appropriate for a master plan. I also had the opportunity to meet with Historical Society. They were kind enough to walk me around the Skank Farmstead. Skank? Skank Farmstead. I was able to walk around the grounds there as well, and it just coincidentally happened to be a beautiful 70-degree day as well. So I thanked them for that and for all the work that they've put into this. They've helped to review this document, provided numerous edits, and really could not have done it without them. So with that being said, just wanted to give a brief overview of the structure of the report before we jump into it. Section 1 is an introduction, which is typical for our planning documents. It introduces the document and it provides a background on what this planning exercise is. Section 2 identifies the goals and policies of the township as they relate to historic preservation. Section 3 provides a very brief history of West Windsor. And then section 4 identifies historic sites and districts. That district notes that not all those sites are necessary for preservation status, but it is an identification of those older historical sites, and we do our best to organize those sites by hamlet. So we do our best to organize it by Clarksville, Dutch Neck, Edinburgh, Grover's Mill, Hen's Neck, Port Mercer, Princeton Basin, Princeton Junction, Scudders Mill, Van Heistville, and then, of course, we have our Potpourri, our other category. That includes numerous sites, as well as the Elway and Raritan Canal, the Route of Washington's March, and the Washington Road Elm Alley as well. Section 5 identifies standards for assessment. Those are national standards, as well as some information on the State Historic Preservation Office, and it notes that should the township choose to want to preserve buildings or districts, it identifies that that criteria should match up with national standards as well. Section 6 discusses the impacts of our master plan, other elements on historic preservation efforts, and then section 7 offers a number of recommendations. So that's an overview of what this plan is. I know the Historical Society is also here to advocate on behalf of establishing a historic preservation commission. So that'll probably, that'll get addressed as well tonight, but probably makes sense first to start with the document. Again, this is a draft, so it is open to criticism, hopefully not too much criticism, open to comment and recommendations and edits. Again, it is dated May 4. And before we actually even get to the substance of this, I just wanted to confirm with the Historical Society that everybody that is listed on page 3, I covered all the members of the Historical Society there.
Did they all review it?
Okay, got it.
Did they all review it?
Yes, yes.
No, I was thinking on that, on that page, because the planning board has responsibility of this element and to vote, is that what, if we bracketed, you know, where it says members of the Historical Society there, and gave them some special recognition, saying something like, we thank the members of the Historical Society of West Windsor for their contributions to this element and for their service to our community.
Yes.
Yeah, I like that, yes. Can you, can you read that again? Because I'd like to verbatim exactly what you said.
We thank, or the township thanks, or everyone, the members of the Historical Society of West Windsor for their contributions to this element, and for their service to our community.
Where would you put that?
Well, if we bracketed, maybe a little bit to separate the planning board.
Where they have the names listed, and then get it there?
Yeah, right, right above it. So we kind of put like a frame around it, and we say historical society, but maybe above that, but... Yeah, right, right above it. So we kind of put like a frame around it, and we say, "Historical Society," but maybe above that, but no.
Great idea.
Yeah.
Hey David, is there, is there a due date on this? I know in, in other kind of in other master plan elements, we have like, it has to be finished by a certain date. Is there a date that we have to finish this by?
There is no due date other than what Sam tells me. But no, there's no statutory due date, so it's not like a housing element or a reaction.
This is an optional element.
And this is an optional one.
This is our first time having such an element.
Yes.
So I think there's probably a timetable. Not, I just want to make sure that.
Nope, no, no timeframe. Some documents, like an open space plan, if you want, PIG funding.
Required items, probably.
Yeah, but this, we're good.
Okay.
So with that being said, typically what we do is that we just delve in section by section. We can start with the introduction, which I already made a correction on page two. Henry Glass, say, I believe his name is, is not a US history, but rather a US historian. Sorry, I corrected that one in case somebody found that.
Paragraph two, it's on the second line, solidify its reputation as a desirable place to live and, and work. We add "and work."
What page?
Well, you're on page two, right? Yeah, it's a second paragraph, second line, a desirable place to live, and add "and work."
As always, we'll be preparing a redline versions as well, so.
I point out on page three, I stumbled over it, but then I realized that in section 2.1, you have only one goal in this.
Yes, yes.
Because usually it's.
Goals and policies, yes. Singular goal in this. Although if anybody has additional goals, we can obviously add that right now.
There's three goals, I think, right?
One goal with three policies associated with it.
We definitely need more goals.
Yeah, there's the goal. So I got it, you got it right. It was just one goal, three policies.
Just one goal as of right now, yes.
Oh, yes.
Page 10, that's on page 10.
And also on page three, I'm just wondering, under section three, where it says provides a brief history of West Windsor. I'm just wondering if you want to add township to that, or whether it makes sense, because in other places, it's just West Windsor. So I don't know for consistency whether it should be West Windsor Township, or whether it should just be West Windsor, because West Windsor is where a township.
Well, but West Windsor was ran well before it was incorporated. In fact, the Battle of Princeton, actually, on most maps, took place when it was then West Windsor.
And the other, the other thing that I'm wondering about is on section six on page three, you have an alternate section of this plan. I'm just curious about that word, an alternate.
I remember Jean used to yell at me for putting that word in, and I eventually snuck it in again.
I'm just thinking, there could be a better word for that.
We'll just replace it with section six.
Or you could say, "This section."
This section. Or the section, yeah, this section.
I'm just, you know.
I don't sleep over stuff like this.
And that, that word also shows up in other parts of this document.
Yes. It is admittedly one of my favorite words. Was there anything else with the introduction?
On page five, you had mentioned all those sections that we have created, and then you have other optional ones that you have in Mark there, including the historic preservation that we're talking about tonight. Is there any intention to develop the other optional plans?
I think with the, going through these, with the economic plan, that was something that was put on hold, because there was a lot of changing economic patterns, which have emanated from COVID, so there's no plan on that yet. Historic preservation, obviously, we are working on adopting that. A transfer, a development transfer plan, we do not have, and I don't think there's been any inclination to adopt that, an educational facilities plan or a public access plan. So those are optional elements that are identified through the municipal land use law, but there's no there's no plans to adopt those plans.
Okay. Do we need to say not adopted, not adopted as of April 5th, like just saying?
Well, the that was, that was actually, that stems back from our discussion, I think, with the farmland preservation plan. We wanted to put a date on it. So we can either keep the, and the April 5th date was obviously the first draft of this plan. Either we could say not adopted as of the date of the adoption of this plan.
Right.
To make it a little bit more fluid, I guess.
What about to be considered, or something like that?
Well, the.
It doesn't, like, not adopted. Maybe we, maybe we won't be doing all this. Maybe we will. I don't know.
It's just basically, it's the status. So when we finally adopted historic preservation ordinance, I'm sorry, element, then we would then put the date down as to, this has not been adopted as of that date. It's real, you know.
The key word is status, I think, there. So it's either adopted or not adopted, as of this time.
You know, at, at the top, very top of the page, it's page five. Second line, adoption of this historic preservation plan. Can you add an element, because it's an element? Okay. And then a couple lines down there, optional elements of a master plan identified by the MLUL, which the township has not adopted. Is that the planning board that's not adopted?
Yes, with the planning board, that's, may I wish to specify.
Okay.
But I think you were saying something on page four before, or no?
Oh, just, you know, towards the bottom, it says a housing plan, one of those bullets there. Is it a fair share housing plan, or just keep it simple with a housing?
A housing plan, I think I actually referred to it. Okay. Anything else with section one, or? Section two, do we want to discuss goal, policies?
Page seven says quality of life, but I'm, I was thinking more of sense of place.
Yeah, that's gonna make sense.
On that section, should there be something, work-life balance, because a lot of people work from home, you know, and it's a great place to work from home and have quality of township. I don't know if it needs its own section or needs to be incorporated into one of these four. Or may, actually, maybe, I think it maybe should have its own section, work-life, you know, balance, and then a little paragraph about how, you know, work close by or work from home, enjoy the benefits of the township. Something to, just a thought, since I work from, I'm a work-from-home person.
I'm a hybrid myself, so, yeah, we can craft language regarding something like that. Okay, moving on then to section two, goal and policies. Our overall goal is to preserve and maintain the historic resources of the township and avoid or minimize detrimental impacts of land development upon those resources to enhance the overall quality of life for township residents. And then we have three policies associated with that. Alan, I know you got one.
Well, if you want me to talk about it, transfer development rights. Since we have no.
Receiving zones, it's a little bit difficult, yeah.
They're so scattered. I mean, the homes, it's not like you have one district. I mean, for transfer development rights to work, you have to have a receiving district, you have to have a sending district. And with everything scattered throughout the town, I don't know how you could possibly create it. And since we just stated that the optional elements of the master plan, we're not interested in doing it, the TDR, it should be eliminated, I believe.
Yeah, I don't necessarily disagree. I think this was language that I had borrowed from our land use plan, which talked about transfer development programs, and some of the benefits of that, and historic preservation was brought up. Probably one of the most historic, no pun intended, uses of transfer development was for historic preservation, but you are right. We need, you would need a receiving zone, so the township would actually have to pick a spot to transfer those development rights. And just in case people don't know what a TDR program is, transfer development or TDR program is essentially a program wherein you, as a property owner, give up your rights to develop your site, but in exchange, you're giving those development capabilities to another site for them to increase their development potential on it.
And there's a payment involved, obviously, for that. It becomes extremely complicated by.
Oh, yes. Grand Central Station was, is probably the most famous. Grand Central Station in New York is probably the most famous example of utilizing TDR programs to preserve, much to their chagrin, historic buildings.
I think in New Jersey, if Burlington County was an experiment, I don't know whether that's still going on there.
And I think there's something that goes on in the Pineslands. I think the Highlands was supposed to have a program, so it is very difficult. So I would have no objection to removing that language.
And that would also go to the end, that we make recommendations.
Yes. Just remind me when we get there.
So it's a policy?
Yeah, policy number one talks about creative land development techniques for historic preservation.
And it is creative. There's no doubt.
Oh, yeah, it's, where are you gonna put it?
We spent quite a bit of time on this years ago. Sam jumped in, and actually did a lot of drafting. We decided, for all the reasons we just gave, it wasn't going to be pursued. Sam, any additional thoughts?
It's something unique with the cranberry golf course. It was called recreational development credits, where the density was determined under current residential zoning, and then I worked with the tax assessor. We came up with an equivalent amount of square footage for office and retail, and a private bank purchased those to preserve the golf course, and some of those development rights were sold to Nassau Park, and they were able to increase their FAR without the need of a D1 variance from the zoning board. But a lot of those development credits expired, because there was a sunset clause in those.
So what wording, what do you cross and add?
Transfer development, right?
Yeah, I would just include clustering, lot averaging, remove, transfer development rights, and then continue with flexible implementation of setbacks and boppers. All right, there's nothing else with the goal and policies. We can.
Also, too, you know, I feel sometimes that we should evaluate the open space tax to ensure that there's enough money for, like, maintenance and/or expansion.
So it's one thing to acquire and then another thing to actually maintain, yeah.
So what language would you want there, Linda, for policy two?
Maybe to preserve and maintain historic resources?
Yeah, just continue to use a local open space tax to preserve historic resources, but as we continue to grow, and we want to do these things, having evaluated recently, the past few years, is there enough money to keep continuing to do what we want to do? So I'm just saying, we should evaluate the open space tax from that perspective. Maybe it needs to be raised. Maybe, maybe it doesn't. Maybe we get enough grants for all of this kind of stuff, but I'm just saying.
So perhaps continue to use the local open space tax to preserve open, to preserve historic resources and assess its viability to maintain those resources?
But just changing it to preserve and maintain historic resources.
Because I think it goes beyond just maintaining. I think what Linda's saying is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we, we need to, it's a recommendation for the township as a whole to look at that open space tax and see the money that's coming through that is viable to preserve and maintain.
But isn't that a function of council?
It is. So I guess this would be a record.
Sometimes suggestions for ordinances are the function of council, too, so I'm just sort of urging this review. So we have enough money at some point in time, every 10 years, five years, whatever, that we consider. Do we have enough, are we collecting enough money in open space for all these different things we want to do?
And the penultimate policy, policy two, it doesn't, none of these identifies who is going to actually be doing the work. It's just policies that we want to, so forth. So I think it's fine, I thought it is.
Hey David, can I ask you a question regarding policy one? The word clustering. I know in a development, right off Prince and Ison Road, we kind of like dissuaded the developer from clustering his houses all along Prince and Ison Road in order to get the density wanted, but I'm guessing in, in this case, it clustering would benefit preserving the historical site by moving the development, you know? I mean, am I reading it correctly?
That is correct, yes.
How clustering would be used?
So clustering would allow a developer to implement smaller lot sizes in exchange for having that shared facility or open space facility, or in this case, a historic preserved space.
And just so you know, Mike, that's what happened with the Skank House. That was a couple hundred-acre farm. The developer did the cluster option and moved the homes away, so there's adequate open space around that old house. There's not new homes right next to it.
So I remember, if you remember that development, Prince and Ison Road across from McCaffrey's, he wanted, he had this development, and he clustered all the houses, I think, to get better density.
Oh, was that the, my thing to the, was that ever there?
That wasn't the zoning application.
Was that, was that celebration?
No, I don't.
Okay, something else.
It's development, it's the one behind the gas station.
Yeah.
Okay, that one. Curtis and I just had a flashback, I think, of another one.
Yeah, I remember, you know, he presented a plan that clustered all the houses, you know, to get the density he wanted, because we were gonna, I don't, I don't remember all the details, but, okay, thank you.
Unless anybody has anything else for goal and policies, section three is a brief history of West Windsor that still runs three pages.
So this is a general comment about this part, section 3.1. Where a reference is made to a specific structure in 3.1, I'd like a parenthetical and the ID number cross-reference. Example, page 15, final paragraph, top of the paragraph, where it mentions Bergen's Inn. I'd want parenthetical ID number, so it connects it.
Yes.
Because so wherever there's an actual structure mentioned in this history, right here, this historical section, that it, it's tied to the rest of the planning up board element by the ID number.
We can put in that ID number, and I think I can even put in a link. If you were to click on that ID number electronically, it'll go to that section.
And then another general question, as we look at it on page 15, the trolley is mentioned. I'm wondering if we could actually put the full proper name of the trolley line there on middle paragraph, page 15, where it says, "Milk was exported to Trenton via a trolley." You know, I mean, that was a historic transportation line, correct? If with me, David?
Yeah, I'm just looking through that section. The Fast Line Trolley, right?
Well, we can get the, we can get the name right, but I'd also, on this same subject of, of that rail line and its, you know, historical significance in the town, I'd also want to mention the establishment of that in the, through the years column on page 12. As, on page 13, as we also mentioned, other transportation systems with the 1834 completion of the Delaware and Raritan. with the 1834 completion of the Delaware and Raritan. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, yes.
Thank you. Dave, since you've liberally taken from this book called the West Windsor Then and Now, I think that it would be appropriate, maybe as a footnote or someplace, to provide a little more information about that book. For example, when was it written?
Okay.
Is there an ISBN number or was it privately published? I don't, I don't know, but that kind of information would be appropriate. And then at the bottom of page 13, you indicate that elsewhere center before moving to its final location. I would suggest changing the word final to current location. On page 14, about four lines from the bottom of the first paragraph, you have the youngest historic hamlet, which was birthed in 1863. I think that might, that word you might want to change.
Youngest or birth or both?
I think it's, yeah.
Where are we?
Which was, we'll say established instead of.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Also, in that first paragraph, at the end of the first paragraph, Scudders' misspelling should have two Ds.
Yes, it should.
Speaking of spelling, this kind of bugged me. You have the Indian name. I looked up the Indian name and the 15 references show it spelled differently. It's L E N N I. And also the two dots, that's like, to me in German, it's Ubl. What are the two dots over the evening?
Then I actually borrowed from the book. I thought that was the, I've seen it with two Ns, I've also seen it with one N. But I did borrow that spelling from the book itself.
So Paul, you did one N, wasn't it?
I did, because there is a website established by the descendants of the actual parents. Quite a long, well, not be called the history period. It's essentially, they're tempted to kind of maintain a knowledge language. They use the UBL.
They use the UBL?
Yeah, yeah.
But they also use a single N, a single N.
Yes, they use a single N there. I mean, they really also.
I know, they're very.
Trust is authority on these.
It's, it's.
All right, so we'll go with that and we're gonna go with the.
They put a footnote for that.
Yeah, perhaps some explanation indicating.
Or the source, your source on that.
Source, yeah, source or footnote explaining, you know, the reference.
Dave, on page 14, you have a table one from the US Census Bureau.
Yes.
And on page two, you mention 1,600 residents. How do you make them, I mean, because you're 1920, 1389, and where 1,600 come from? And when it was?
1,600 came from older census data. The drop off in population between 1860 and 1920, I'm not too sure. I didn't analyze what those census years were. It is a little bit of, a lot of work to find those older census numbers, but I don't know where that drop off came from. But that 1860 number was, I'm sorry, that 1,600 number was actually from a census. So it could have been, I'm not, you know what, I'm not too sure where it came from.
Found out where it came from, footnote.
And the, on that table one, where you say the sources, the US Census Bureau.
Well, you know what, actually, I think, I'm sorry to take that back, 1853, the present day boundary was established. So it could have been Princeton being ripped off from the rest of the municipality that led to a decrease in the township's population.
You might want to put a year for that US Census Bureau source for table one.
Table one, we do have a source, US Census Bureau.
Right, what year?
Oh, it's, well, it's from every year, 1920 to 2020.
So there'd be 1,600 before 1920 then?
I'm sorry?
1,600.
It was, it was 1,600 in the mid 19th century, but then Princeton was removed from, so Princeton used to be part of West Windsor, that Princeton separated, they, they, they quote Fleetwood Mac, they went their own way. And that led to a decrease in the population. So that is probably that, the reason why you see in 1920, the population's 1,389 as opposed to a population of 1,600 in the mid 18th century.
I think a lot of it, because this looks conflicting, you know?
It's not really conflicting, you, you lost, you lost Princeton. Yeah, you lost the municipality, so West Windsor from being this big to this big.
But we don't know that.
What? That, I can add that information.
World War I was going on.
Same thing why in 1772, there was over 1,900 residents. Again, you're looking at a larger area and then it just keeps on shrinking down. But we can add, we can add a footnote somewhere.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, I have a, I have something. There's no, there's no reference to the Martians landing on October 30th, 1938. We have a plaque.
There was somewhere, actually.
There was, actually.
I thought there, there's something where.
There is.
In the Grover's Mill section?
Yeah. Okay, but it's not referenced anywhere as like a historical.
Oh, you mean in the, in the fact?
Yeah.
In the, throughout the years?
Yeah, we have a plaque, we have a plaque and everything, you know?
We can add, we can add some language.
In the through the years column?
Yes.
No, it was, it was a memorable event, for sure.
I mean, they were shooting at the, at the Grover's Mill barn.
They were.
I took my, I remember taking my son to show him where the Martians landed when he was little.
When, when it occurred you were there.
Michael, there is reference, Michael, there's reference on page 53.
Okay, I gotta check.
On page 53, second paragraph, it's talked about.
Give me a little, little more, we need a little more play on that.
We can add, we can add something in the through the years, through the years language.
Yeah, a little picture of Martians.
Is there anything about television being invented in West Windsor?
Believe under the RCA section, we do have something.
That might be in the next.
And. Yeah, I believe we do reference that, but we'll confirm.
With, in that throughout the years there, with 1942, 43, you mentioned RCA and Hayden Chemical Corp, open facilities. Most people know Hayden Chemical Corp as American Cyanid. So you may want to put that in for rent. It was first, it was first known as.
Hayden, right.
And it was in a different location than American Cyanid ended up being. It, it was located where the Black Rock Building is.
Neither did I, actually.
Former site at the post office. Where are we?
Unless there's anything else in section three. Section four would be a deeper dive into our historic sites and districts.
So in, in the overview, where all the, the sites are mentioned, did we want to say the source of this inventory?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we can add another, almost like we do in the section three regarding that brief history, add another footnote with.
You know, where this full listing of all these properties and sites are from.
Okay, so we'll source both Historic Society as well as Conservation Plan had some of these sites as well. We had to rework a little bit of it because some of the block and lots were not lining up, but.
And since we didn't have a historic preservation plan element, a lot of the historic informations in our current conservation plan element, which we're revising, I hope to have in front of the board in draft format, the August 2nd. And it'll have, it won't reference historic information anymore since we have thought of this by then.
Were any, were any of these listed on the National Register or the State Register?
There was one or two that were listed on the State Register, I believe. I forget if they were on the National Register. There's nothing in the National Register.
So the same register you have.
I'm sorry?
Did you, did you make note of those that are on the State Register?
I believe with the, the one that was on it is the, bear with me, it's in Mercer County Park, the John Rogers House. Yeah, the Rogers House, I believe it was on the State Register, and we reference that.
Okay, and could you put a note on, could you put a note to that, a footnote in the overview? Have you had the Rogers House on this, on the overview?
It's item number, there you are, item 164. So how about we put brackets also on State Register?
I'd say if you put some type of asterisk or star or a little dagger, you could then, you know, have.
Star and then the.
You know.
You went from star to dagger.
Well, no, a dagger is a symbol to look down at the end of the document. You know, it's an alternate to us.
Just put an asterisk.
So what, actually, what, Alan's bringing up a good point. What other agencies of, agent, agencies of, I'm lacking words. Recognition of historic or buildings, resources, are there besides the State Register? There's the state, there's a national, National Register, there's. But other than that, Paul, do you know of any others that I missed?
There's also, I know this one's under the Super National, because of the downtown group, downtown history. But one that, that one is a, actually, a very historic district, it's Florida. On the subject of the National History, it might be a little bit of success. It will be Washington, as well as the Chris's Downtown District.
That Washington Trail that ran from Hamilton through.
Along the southern edge of this township.
Yeah, and there are, to now, I guess.
That's a state park.
But it's, I think you're indicating that it's listed on the State Register.
Yes.
Okay, so we should, we should do that and show it, you know, within the, within the map as well. And if there is something with regard to the Pennsylvania Railroad, that should be noted, but I've never heard that one. So you're looking at the Washington Trail and you're looking at the, now.
Yeah, I actually have the state.
The alley of trees.
Yeah, that's definitely on there. What we will do is that we will make a footnote for anything that's on the State Historic Preservation Register. A lot of these will not necessarily show up on a historic sites list because there are certain archaeological sites that they'll give an ID to, but they don't really map those out per se. Yeah. For a very specific reason, which is they don't want people visiting those.
Sort of allied question, and Paul, this one would be for you. Years ago, Preservation New Jer, annually, Preservation New Jersey puts out a list of endangered sites in the state of New Jersey. Every year, they come up with their top 10 or so. Besides the Alley of Trees, which is a former item upon a former list, have there ever been other West Windsor properties that have made the endangered list of Preservation New Jersey?
Okay.
Thank you.
Should we be separating, separating out, since it is recognized that not every site identified below is worthy of preservation? I mean, should we have a little bit different section on, on what we, on what we think? Because everything is just all together on one big list.
My recommendation would be to keep everything together because in order to really deem a site historic, you should have a separate study that's prepared for that site. So if it's something that's going to be, i- if the township does eventually choose to preserve specific sites locally, typically what will happen is that there's some sort of study that's prepared to accompany that, that really goes into details of what that site is, what's historic about it, why it's significant. And that type of study is generally prepared by historic preservationists. And I would not feel comfortable necessarily going through and picking out which sites I think are worthy.
That's a lot of work.
Yeah.
No, I know, I'm just saying, now, people read this, I, I don't know if all these residents know that their homes are on this list.
They might not.
They may, they may find out, however, and I mean, you can't, it's impossible for him to do what you're asking, I think.
They'd be very tough.
I mean, there are actual archaeological consultants that will gladly take $250,000 from you to do that, if not more.
Oh, yeah. But we're saying these are all historic sites, this 181?
They're, they're historic in the anecdotal sense, whereas most of the sites on this list are over 100 years old at this point. But colloquially, yes, they are historic. Would they necessarily meet the designation status of being historic as identified by, say, some of those national standards? Some of them may, some of them may not.
So it's not something that shows up in the deed that it's.
Oh, this would not show up in a deed. No, i- if, if there was a site, yeah, if there was a site that was to be deemed historic, right? The first step would obviously be for the municipality to adopt an ordinance that would enable the preservation of historic sites and districts. That would be step number one. Step number two is that a study would need to be prepared to identify a specific piece of property, why it's historic, why it's eligible for historic process or preservation. And then there would be an ordinance adopted and that property owner would get notified for that. So this is just really a broad identification of sites that have some historic potential. But in order to deem a site historic, there is a lot other steps past that that would require homeowner notification. But simply including something in this would not show up on a deed search or anything like that. This is just a general overview of.
Aren't, aren't some of the sites here preserved?
Some of them are already preserved, like the John Rogers House.
Right, Grover's Mill Barn, right? This, shouldn't we have like an indication here, so they're like a little P or something? Preserve, something that indicates on the list.
I wouldn't say the Grover's Mill Barn's preserved. I mean, it was converted from its prior use and it is, you know, it's got some apartments and some commercial uses.
Outside wasn't touched, right?
Yeah, the outside was totally restored.
Restored, right.
Just because something also appears on the State Historic Register, if it's privately owned, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's preserved. It could still be.
I think if there's anything preserved in this list of 181, it should have a little P or something next to it that kind of indicates as such in a footnote that designates it as already preserved.
I, actually, I'm okay with just the status either being existing or demolished. Because, Michael, then who makes the evaluation? That something is preserved? I mean, that's, that's a judgment. And so that's why I'm wondering, that's why I just, in this, in the overview, you know, spreadsheet, just having the status, is it existing, is it still up? Or is it not there anymore?
I thought some of the items here are, are listed on.
Rogers House is preserved.
The Rogers House would be preserved, yes, and that's also owned by the county as well.
Yeah, they have the Skink, that's been preserved.
Yep, Washington Rome Road.
Well, I'm asking is that when you're looking down the list and you're saying not every site below is worthy of preservation, I don't know, maybe that wording has to be changed to, you know, some, these are known existing sites of historic reference, and then a P or something that said, you know, preserved. So just add a little more detail to the list.
I mean, just because the, the residence or the property is.
Residents or the property is on this list doesn't mean that it, I mean, it's historic from the township perspective, but not from any other entities' perspective. I mean, I enjoyed reading this document because I'm, I'm interested in local history and I, I know some of the people mentioned, for example, Louis C. Ballard. The guy had a construction company in Princeton. You know, he preserved a building in Princeton, which was his office, but he actually lived in West Windsor. I never knew that until I read this document because I always thought he lived in Princeton. But it would be nice if I went and drove around West Windsor with this document and saw some of these properties because it's of interest to me. However, I'd probably get in a car wreck looking at. This and trying to find the, the house, but anyway. You know, but just because there, there's like an address here in terms of site name and location, to me, that indicates that it's not, I mean, it's historic in the sense of it being old, but it's not historic in the sense that somebody of local importance lived there. Right, I know, but I'm just saying, like, for example, I think. Royce Hogg School, for example. He lived on North Mill Road. I don't think his, his house is on here. But, you know, he's a, he was an interesting guy in terms of like he did for the township. Not just that they made it a school.
I think I, I think many, many years ago, I met this widow.
Okay, so in that overview, what we can do, that is, we can identify. That these are older structures. That have contributed to the community or the center place in West Windsor, include language like that, just so people get a better feel that, you know, there's some sort of value to these properties, also include sources of where they came from. We can add references to sites that are identified on the State Historic Preservation. Register. It's just important to note that just because something is on that doesn't necessarily mean it's preserved. Like, for example, the Sarnoff Site is technically, there's an opinion on the Sarnoff Site. That was never preserved.
So this, this section came straight from the historical?
It came from a combination of both, the research that was done by the Historical Society. Also from the prior conservation plan element of the master plan. So we kind of had to reconfigure that because some of the block and lots were not adding up. Some of the mapping was a little bit difficult to read, but it's, it's essentially a combination of those two with a whole new ID system and organizational scheme behind it.
Jake, you gonna acknowledge that somewhere?
Yes. Yeah, we'll throw in like another little box header in the corner.
A quick question, because the property is in this list, does, does the owner of the property has any restrictions of changing it or any way?
Great, very good question. No restrictions, no change to that person's property. So this is really just for identification purposes. In order to have that type of restriction, the first thing that the township would have to do is adopt some sort of ordinance enabling them to designate sites as historic. And then there would have to be a specific ordinance adopted for that specific piece of property. So thi- this list would really make no difference on those properties.
There are certain, you know, I've seen some signs, you know, the story cannot be changed. Now, people, that, those who are property listed, do they know that they are in this list? Or some of them?
Some of them I'm sure do, because some of those families have lived there for.
Just curious.
Yeah, some of those families, based on the, the research that I read from the Historical Society, some of those houses have only passed between two or three houses. Other people, I'm sure that they don't know necessarily the, you know, prior history, so I'm sure there's a bit of a split. Or sometimes, you know, the houses are old, but they've been gutted on the inside, so maybe they look old on the outside, but on the inside, it's completely modern. So there's a little bit of a mix with everything.
Okay, are we, are we done with this list? We gotta get moving. Okay, section 4.2, archaeological sites. Any dinosaur bones in town?
No, but a lot of, a lot of artifacts from the, the Len Aitlaa fact, so. And I was able to see some of those in the barn, which is cool. Again, we don't identify any specific archaeological sites. The reason being is the state does not allow you to.
Speaking of archaeological sites, did Bridgepoint ever complete their study?
Yeah, they did complete their study there. I think there was a homestead or something going back there from the 18th century in that era where you saw them doing their investigation last year along Clarksville Road.
Yes, I've seen that special, but.
If you like it, I can get your copy, sure.
Did you find anything? On page 24, at the bottom.
We're still on 4.2.
Anything else on archaeological sites, anybody? Okay, Clarksville Road.
A general question as we now go into the rest of the document with all these illustrations. Does the inset map in the upper right of each picture really work?
Yes.
At, at, with, without a magnifying glass, come on, do you?
Oh, I thought you meant do they work as in, are they accurate?
No, no, they might be accurate.
Oh, yeah, because they're accurate.
I'm talking about legibility. Does it really, does it really help do these little, this, this postage size image of West Windsor Township's roots, where you're trying to locate a site within the postage stamp? Does, does it, does it really work as, as a document?
On paper, I can see what you're saying, it's tough to read. If, if you're looking at it on a PDF document, though, it does help because you could zoom in and it is clear on a PDF document.
Give you some idea, you know, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean. Gives the idea which corner of township it is.
Gives you an idea of where the township is, but, but can you make it a little larger?
Well, no, I don't, I'm not asking for a size change. I'm just, I just, because if, if it works as a, within the PDF, and of course, in a PDF, you can.
Yeah, zoom in and out.
And whatever you, whatever percentage you need to read it.
So is there a possibility of the margin?
Well, actually, bear in mind, bear in mind, I mean, it's, it's just referential because in the back of the document, you know, we've got the, the maps and the, and the quad maps that indicate all the properties.
I think it's just a reference, it gives you the quadrant that it's in, and this is the blow up.
It does not indicate which quadrant.
It is.
Well, it shows you right there, the little.
Yeah, but that does not indicate the quadrant.
I have. I, I, I have very few practical skills in life except for GIS stuff and maps, so I could, if you want that, insert map larger, that's something.
No, I, I, I don't know what the pleasure of the board is, I'm just saying, to me, it doesn't work.
To further the rest of the board, whatever you guys want, we can do. Yeah, we can make it one and a half times larger, read one.
Slightly bigger. Okay, so you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna blow that, blow that up a little bit, so that it's, it's more useful.
And that's a general remark for the next.
That would be for, yeah, for everything.
Yes, yes, it applies to all the pages that have the inset.
Listen, as, as somebody who's lazy, is worrying, wearing off, yes, we can, we can make that change. Has a, has an expiration date.
Page 24 at the bottom, they, you have then and instead of and now.
And a part of page 24?
An, and, not an.
Footnote seven.
Oh, thank you. That bottom.
And if you could put a date or ISBN number.
Nice catch.
Well, it's based on the other pages too, the and section.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm sure I copied and pasted that one, so.
If, if you're gonna put an ISBN numbers in, can you define it somewhere so people know what it is?
Do you have an ISBN number? There's no ISBN number, so let's just do it with a. I'm sorry?
You can add link to the publisher.
They're the publisher, nah.
Okay, 26, Dutchneck.
First paragraph, Voorhees has two Os, the Voorhees family. Is a well-known New Jersey family, and in fact, in Maryland, I went to high school with Alan Voorhees' daughter.
We should put that in.
No, no, so, but, but, you know, Alan, Alan Voorhees, that there's, there's a, there's a structure at Rutgers now, not in.
Voorhees, yeah, the Voorhees Center, yes.
The transportation?
Yes, that was out of my school.
Alan Voorhees Transportation.
Yeah, they, the Blassey School. That's the, that's the first reference to the Voorhees Center I've heard since I graduated.
Alan Voorhees' daughter called, said, "Don't call her, stop calling."
I'll see her at my 50th in October. My 50th high school reunion in October, I'll see her.
On, on the top of page 27, you have this picture. And I'm just kind of curious if you might want to add a caption to the picture, or I mean, what is it? It's a picture of Dutchneck or something.
On Village Road.
On Village Road?
Yeah, we can add a reference.
I don't know, you know, to me, it's kind of like just hanging there, what, what's the.
A hanging chat.
On, on that second paragraph there, says the township is in the process of developing a Dutchneck planning study. It, are we doing that right now presently, currently?
Currently working on that right now. I just was working on some box plots of lot sizes versus age of the structure constructed, so. No, we are working on that, so, yeah.
Well, just. Let us know about that, you know.
Page 28, in the Dutchneck section, ID 4, Dutchneck Inn, is that also the Bergen Inn?
Yes.
Where we made, so. Can we provide that clarity in that, in that explanation there? You put Bergen's Tavern, but other places you say Bergen Inn, I N N.
Okay.
So just clarity of, of that, and if this is the ID reference, it would be as aforementioned.
That N where it should be capitalized.
Yeah, right, wherever, wherever it shows up, correct, correct.
I just wanted to check about. Beth Heim Synagogue, that's considered part of Dutchneck?
Yeah, it is. Where this geography is.
Do we have any, any kind of a map like indicating these neighborhoods?
No, because they're unincorporated, so there is no definitive boundary or any. I would say Dutchneck goes and up into the township line and becomes East Windsor then.
Well, you know what, that, that first sentence, you're right, I, I don't know if I'd actually consider Beth Heim to be a part of it, but that first sentence talks about the Dutchneck began to transform as the community around it developed, and then it references Beth Heim, so I, I think that was more of a reference to.
What number is Beth Heim?
Sorry, this is on the page, top of page 27, so I think it was, this is more of a discussion of the community surrounding Dutchneck as it begins to transform.
Right, because to me, a Dutchneck was really what you were talking about.
Yeah, I'd agree, I don't think that, yeah.
And then beyond, I never realized that that.
I think it's more talking about how the outside has changed and that's reflecting the insides, particularly with traffic. But, yeah, in our, in our planning study of Dutchneck, I, I did not analyze Beth Heim, so.
Just point out on page 29, the, the history of the Dutchneck School being built on a former township-owned cemetery. Quite interesting.
Yes.
I know that. When the township, when Community Park was created, there was a big discussion about whether should the township have a cemetery or not? Should we have a district in West Windsor for a municipal cemetery? Here we go back to 1834 and find that we do have a township cemetery. No longer exists, and I'm kind of curious what they did with all those, how do you say?
Great question. That was one of my favorite stories, reading through the history of this township. That and Glen Acres, I think, are tied for some of my favorite things that I read.
And I have to tell my children if they went to a school.
Just don't tell them to be there at night, no.
Page 30, ID number eight, Dutchneck Chapel. The final sentence in that paragraph says, quote, "Since 1987, it has housed the West Windsor Plainsboro Regional School District Board of Education." Until what date? The Board of Ed has now moved over to Grover's, to, to the school.
Village.
To village school, to village school.
But, but the West Windsor Plainsboro Regional Board of Education still owns the building.
Well, they might own the building, but they're not housed there.
No, they still use it, they have some offices there.
Oh.
So, but you are right, it should be owned and operated by.
It could use clarity on that, I mean, right, for, for a good number of years, the Board of Ed, that was their offices, until they moved.
You know, expanded since the Board of Education moved from West Windsor, still, but still owns the building.
I, I would say since 1987 has been owned and operated by.
That, that, that's fine.
You're right, because it doesn't, you're right, it doesn't house it necessarily.
Same page, ID number nine, could you put the address of the Slayback Need Homestead?
As we're going through, Dutchneck.
I don't have any, I don't have any more on that.
Nothing with Dutchneck?
I'm good with Dutchneck.
Hey, does George Bergen have anything to do with Bergen County?
No, well, that was a very emphatic no, I apologize. As I, as a Bergen County resident, recently looked into this, the origin of the namesake for Bergen County is still relatively unknown. It might have been named after some Dutch settlers, but it remains unknown.
So it's not Norwegian? It's not Norwegian?
No.
I mean, I'm thinking, did Bergen, Norway, was that predated Bergen County?
It, potentially, but there's just no historical reference for where the name Bergen County actually came from.
Interesting, okay, funny.
I've been to Bergen, Norway, and Bergen County doesn't look like Bergen.
I'm sure it doesn't.
As a Bergen County resident, stay very safe with you, no, I'm joking.
You don't have Highway 4 and 17 coming together in.
Okay, that's. Linda's on my side. I live right next to Route 4 and 17 as well.
It's nice.
Nice is the word for it.
A lot of open space there.
Yeah, tell me about it.
I do live next to Radburn, which is the first garden community in the United States, and it is a national landmark, so it is a really cool spot to check out.
Let's go to Edinburgh.
Edinburgh, let's go to Edinburgh, from Radburn to Edinburgh, section 4.5. And again, any reference to then and now, we will add the D to the word and.
I don't have anything.
Section 4.5, coincidentally.
Unless there's something else.
Any takers for any edits or comments in 4.5? If not, we have section 4.6, which begins on page 53, that is Grover's Mill.
So a general question, and Paul, you might want to jump in on this one too. When does Grover's Mill have an apostrophe? When does it not?
It's a great question.
So whatever we do, just, we could, we would be consistent in our use of apostrophe or not.
Yes, I'll make. Yes, I'll make sure that we are consistent. Although, it's funny, the, the historic map resource that I utilize just calls it Grover Mill, but we won't, uh. If there's no takers for Grover's Mill, which is section 4.6, 4.7 is Penn's Neck, that begins on page 60.
You have, uh, on page 60, uh, you have RCA or the Radio City Corporation opened its headquarters. RCA headquarters was located in, uh, Manhattan.
Okay, so this would be a.
Relocation.
It was a laboratory. It was its premier laboratory that was open.
I'm actually going to refer to it then instead of headquarters as, uh, premier laboratory.
David, did you get that? When we did, when we went, walked through the, uh, do you have a copy of that book? The, the.
I still do, I believe, yes.
The fifty years, the fifty, first fifty years of, uh, the lab, of the RCA labs?
Yes, I do.
So, I'd say, check that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey, hey, Dave. My, my understanding is this, uh, headquarters Rockefeller Center. That's where the NBC.
Exactly.
Studios where Zornoff had his office there. But Zornoff did have an office. He did have an office in, in the, uh, lab, but he only used it, uh, two or three times. He had an apartment there, but headquarters was actually.
Yeah. And what, and what we will also do is add a reference to that, uh, to that book as well. So, anybody else reading this, uh, can be aware that there's a book that's just about the history of that site, which is also pretty cool.
Are you taking the word headquarters out?
Yeah, we're going to swap headquarters with, uh, premier laboratory, as I put in. Uh, we're just going to confirm that from the book as well.
Hey, uh, David, going back to the Grover's Mill section for a moment, should we have some, we, we mentioned, um, the mart, you know, the Orson Welles Martians and stuff. Is there something in there where the plaque is located in the Grover's Mill section?
Yeah, the Van Ness Park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think if we're going to reference something throughout the years, it's already referenced in another page 53 or whatever it was, right? Maybe you need to tone kind of like, um, right, it's mentioned on page 53 under, you know, the first couple paragraphs of Grover's Mill, but maybe you need to an ID number?
Well, we do have the Millwrights House, which is ID 57, and that's where the, the water tower was, that was shot out.
Shot out. But maybe you need, uh, then, was it Van Ness Park?
That's where the, the plaque is.
Yeah, maybe like something Van Ness Park, um, as a reference point, but a little with the, your, your map and a little blurb about the plaque.
Okay, as a separate ID or as a reference with ID number 57?
I think it has, maybe you need to reference it, but I don't know. I'll leave it up to the board to decide whether or not. I think it's an interesting factoid.
Yeah. Just staying on 57 for a second. It's the War of the Worlds, isn't it?
Yes, you're correct. That's right.
At the very end?
The, under, the paragraph under Millwrights, uh, House.
A war, yeah, probably more than one world, yes.
Yeah, there was more, there was many worlds involved in the context.
Yes.
Yes.
Usually at least.
I don't know if anybody else finds it confusing, but on these large yellow maps, is it possible to just put the actual street names on them? I mean, I don't know the town by part, um, reference, or the majors, the major ones.
With the, I'm sorry, with the smaller inset maps?
Washington.
Oh, those. Uh, yeah.
The major, the major.
Those big ones, yeah. Yeah, that, we can do that. It might not line up 100% because these are older historic maps, so they're.
I, I understand that, but at least it gives somebody a kind of an idea as to where they are.
Page 66. Jarab's Market.
Yes, I'm there.
Yes. Would, is it worthy of mentioning that, um, having lived there 45 years, I'm the old, longest continuous resident of such building?
You're on Jarab's Market.
Hey, Carol Carson gets called out on things. Come on.
You are? Page, page 66.
Page 66. Page 66, ID number 70. And I've got pictures to show.
Picture of Curtis at the bar. Yeah, yeah, and the other, other corner.
Jarab's Market.
On the other corner, picture of Jake.
You might also want to mention, besides the presence of Papa Johnson, there are four apartments in the building, if you're actually putting what the building is about. That's me right there. So, actually, no, seriously. Now, the, the building was built 1936. I moved in in 1977. So, now 45 years later, I've, I've passed the point of any 1930, 30s resident there who would, if they stayed the whole time.
Listen, I have no, I have no objection throwing into the plan.
I've lived there 45 years.
How does this relate to dating the Voorhees girl, which came first?
No, I went to high school with Suzie Voorhees. She's the daughter of Allen Voorhees. Well, we went to high school in Bethesda, Maryland. I'll see her at my 50th reunion this year in October.
She wants you to stop calling or I keep calling.
You know what? I will make the executive decision. Forty-five years.
You do that.
It's the adoption of this plan.
Three apartments and one downstairs.
Do you need people like that in one of them?
I live in the upstairs in the back.
Oh, you live above Papa Johnson?
Okay, I'm going to add a reference because I would like to.
The first, the first person to be both vice chair of both.
Wait, is that true?
It is. That's Sam, isn't it? And the first member of both boards. No, I never actually.
Okay. Um, unless there's anything else with Penn's Neck. Usually what I would do, and there's a reason. Usually what I like to do is I'll put, um, IBID, IBID. The reason I didn't do it is because when these get, sometimes the pages will shift, and the next section will begin, and then it'll say IBID, but now it's referencing another reference in another page. So, just to make life easier, if the plan gets shifted around, I just kept it like that. But I actually started off doing it, I know, yeah, yeah. I started off doing exactly what you were saying, yeah. And I just, I changed it to that because I started shifting things around. But, yeah, became a technical difficulty of Microsoft Word.
So, um, this is a question that sort of straddles two districts, but since it comes up in the Penn's Neck section, I'll bring it up here. ID number 63 mentions the Penn's Neck Schoolhouse, when it was at 3637 US Route 1, on the former Jewel Farm. And you can see that the location on this map is sort of right in the midst of Carnegie Center. Um, yep, in the other sites section, a later section of our study, um, the, it not, and it's not in the inventory, the Penn's Neck Schoolhouse, which was at the corner of Alexander Road and US Highway 1, on the southbound side, it was there before the construction of the interchange. And this is a building that, that was practically a twin of the Dutchneck Schoolhouse, which we have a call out for in the Dutchneck section. Um, yes, it is demolished, but should there be some mention and of acknowledgement that there was a, a, a Penn's Neck Schoolhouse at that location?
And that was at the southerly intersection of what again?
Paul, do you have thoughts on this?
So, I, I can just add some, what Curtis was talking about, what Curtis was talking about is a brick and stone building that was called a Dutchneck. And what Curtis was talking about is a much older wooden schoolhouse.
Correct. I, that is correct. That distinction is correct. But the latter, the. Well, I'm wondering, it's not, it's, there's no mention of even the existence. No, no, but it's not, there's, it's not in this document at all. It's not acknowledged. It, it, the last, the, this would be in the section Other Sites, because it's not like one of the established neighborhoods. And, but, um, close by, like number 181 or whatever is, you mentioned Glen Acres. So, it's like, that would be the section of the document.
Okay, so this would be 182.
Whatever.
Okay.
Paul, help you out on the details on this one.
Uh, yeah, so 182, and it just, it was located in the southerly corner of the intersection of Route 1 and Alexander?
It, it was just a south of the dinky, south of the dinky line, um, on Highway 1 southbound.
Yeah.
How's that for a description? South of the dinky line, on the, on the southbound side of US Route 1, between there and Alexander Road.
Okay, that was a former.
But it was demolished when they built the interchange in the 80s.
Oh, that's the one you were telling me about, yeah.
Who, who was that? Jerry Lynn has his offices. We're in the, I, I, I mean, as an architect, we had a, there was a, a repro company that used to be in there, that building, too. Leo Mahoney also had his offices in that building at one time.
David, no, on page 69, with respect to the description of RCA, it talks about color television. So, they didn't invent just black and white, it was color?
I, I can check from their, uh, book, but I believe it was colored.
The book, because they invented both there. Zwirken did it like, well, actually, Zwirken, I think, did it before in the 20s.
Yeah.
But, but they, they didn't have that lab until 42. And then the color TV was invented there. And the first solid state TV was invented there. The only tube was, uh, the picture tube. And the only reason I know that is my neighbor next door growing up spotted.
No, and, and Simon, that's a good point. It would be, it would be interesting to find out how many patents came out of those laboratories.
Yeah.
Um, that would be, that would be an interesting, interesting note.
If, if that book doesn't have that.
The book you gave me.
Story I had in my office. At the College of New Jersey would have that. He works there now.
Paul, are you familiar with the book we're talking about in relation to SRI? Yeah, Mary will show it to you after the meeting.
I will look that.
And they, I, I, just so you know, they've got plenty of copies over at Sartor. You can probably get one.
They, they hand them out there.
They handed.
They're always at the tour. They have plenty of boxes of those books.
Yeah. Cases, they have cases of those books, yeah.
So, yeah, we'll confirm that. I thought black and white TV existed before the establishment of that lab.
The book's going to clear that up.
But the book will clear it up. Okay, um, anything else regarding Penn's Neck? Otherwise, we have Port Mercer.
Oh, um, also, I, I noticed on page 69, when you're talking about, um, SRI, um, its headquarters is in Menlo Park, I believe, in California. It's not located in West Windsor.
Okay.
That's Stanford University, though.
Yeah. Yeah, it might be research facility, not necessarily headquarters. That's not the check that went once.
Sure. So, the, it's.
The final sentence, page ID 75.
I was going to say it's a home to a research facility. Right, so, all right, okay, corrected. Next is the scandalous Port Mercer, section 4.8. That begins on page 70. The description for 4271 Quaker Bridge Road, maybe chuckle.
It might be, uh, Lawrence Historical AL Society. I don't know if it's, if it's an AL or not.
Which one is that on?
The, uh, first paragraph, page 70, second to last line, Historical Society?
Lawrence Historic, Historical?
Do you know, do you know their proper?
Yeah, um.
AL.
Check right now.
Yeah.
Confirmed. Okay. Uh, there's nothing for 4.8. The next section will be 4.9, which is Princeton Basin. Princeton Basin, relatively short. There's not much left, unfortunately. And then 4.10 is Princeton Junction. That begins on page 76.
Do you want any further discussion on the ladies of the night?
That was my third favorite thing that I found out, reading this, uh.
What page is that on?
Seventy-two.
If with ID number 77.
It might be on Lawrence's side. Lucivius Lawrence.
Okay, not hearing anything else for Port Mercer or Princeton Basin. Section 4.10, Princeton Junction, beginning of page 76. Princeton Junction going once? If there's nothing for Princeton Junction, section 4.11 is Scudders Mill? Or Scooter's?
How come my house is not in the Princeton Junction section?
Is it stored?
Kidding. Twenty years.
1936. I go back. Mine goes back to 36. Probably, probably, right. Fifty years later.
Eighty-four.
Predate me. Uh, Scudders Mill, section 4.11. That begins on page 91, and, and Ben Heistville begins on page 94. That's section 4.12.
So, um, uh, are we in, are we in, we're in Princeton Junction, right? Section?
No, we passed Princeton Junction.
Where, I'm, I'm want to go on page 99, uh, page 86, ID 99.
Yes.
Um, in that paragraph about John Nash, I think you should somehow, some way connect him to Princeton University. There's no reference to him with Princeton University in that paragraph. Page, page 86 about John Forbes Nash.
So, yes, I agree. Forbes Nash, so Nash is a mathematical genius and professor at West Windsor University, Princeton University.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, I'll add that one.
Did Einstein ever live in West Windsor, or is always in making, Einstein, did he ever live in West Windsor?
One, one twelve, merc.
Yes.
Yeah, I feel bad for people living in that house. There's a big sign saying, "Private house, don't knock."
What's interesting is there's not, there's not any kind of designation.
My.
Einstein living.
Um, my father told me when he was a coxswain for Massachusetts Institute of Technology, when he would come down for crew meets on Lake Carnegie, they would sometimes see Albert Einstein coming to watch the crew races at Lake Carnegie.
Interesting.
Wow.
So, the, the question is, did he ever cross the bridge into West Windsor Township?
Well, I'm sure he did.
Do we need to put a plaque where he?
I don't know.
When they did the IQ movie with Walter Matthau.
Yeah.
They had to use the house next door and build a porch on the front of it to make it look like the other house. And then the town had to get after them to get rid of the porch to make it look like it used to.
No.
No, I, I mean, it is amusing that both the movie IQ on Einstein and A Beautiful Mind. No, I, I mean, it is amusing that both the movie IQ on Einstein and A Beautiful Mind on John Nash, it happened right here.
Yeah.
You know, and these two major films, you know, documented it.
And the Manhattan Project started in the.
Oh, the Institute for Advanced Study?
No, 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 what's the name of it? North on Sayre Drive, where Sayre Drive is, that their clubhouse is the building where they started with it.
But that's in Plainsboro.
Okay, moving right on.
Moving on.
Marion City. Anything on Marion City?
Uh, page ninety. There's an extra digit thrown in at twenty-seven Marion Avenue in the year constructed. You see where I'm staying? Dave?
Oh, yeah, it's probably not constructed in twelve thousand hundred. Nineteen twenty, yes.
Page ninety, the table, twenty-seven Marion Avenue, the date is incorrect.
It's from the tenth one down, or the tenth one from the bottom.
I don't know, I'll, I'll figure it out, probably.
It, it's nineteen twenty.
The Marion City neighborhood had a sale several years ago of a T-shirt. Marion City, and on the back of the T-shirt, they had a classified ad or some ad about selling houses.
Oh, that's.
In Marion City, if you can get a hold of that, you might wanna put that in the documents.
Simon, could you elaborate on that a little bit? I don't quite understand. Could you elaborate on that a little bit? I'm not sure what the selling houses in Marion City has to do with historical preservation.
Oh, no, I'm just saying, in Marion City, just for historical purposes. It, it, it had a nice little thing about classified, a classified ad for selling houses for sale.
Oh, you mean, as a, as a twelve? I see.
No, that would be nice to put in here.
Curtis, you don't still have one of those T-shirts, do you?
I, no, I have the, I have the original Grover's Mill T-shirt from the first.
That's interesting.
From the first celebration, what's, well, I'm trying to remember when, the very first celebration for, uh, for the War of the Worlds. Garrison Keillor came and spoke, uh, what, offered reflections that night.
Nice.
Um, Carol Besskey was one of the organizers, Douglas Forster and Andrew Forster, where they were organizers for that. And then we have, we have a parade, we have a parade on Washington Road. We have a parade on Washington Road.
Nice. So Princeton Junction, Scudders Mill, Van Highsville. Those are our current sections.
Again, and on the Van Highsville, and this one, this one was a really revelation to me. I didn't even know Van Highsville. I told you that this document was existing. Is there some way to capture the, the, the dates or times of the existence of Van Highsville? Or when it, when it was more or less established and when it was gone? Yeah, that, right, that's where that house was, the seventeen fifty. Also, there's a mention of the Fast Line Trolley Route, if we, if we could put the proper name, as I mentioned earlier tonight, of that, of that trolley line.
Okay, what, what?
What is the proper name of the trolley line?
Yeah, what was the name of that trolley line? Do we know?
Trenton, that, like, dash, two, dash. Yeah.
I'm sorry, so wait, dash.
New Brunswick. Fast trolley. No, I think it probably went back and forth, I guess. They collected tomatoes to go down to Canada, right? Didn't they do that? Oh, okay.
That was on a parallel track.
Sorry? By truck, okay, okay, I thought, I thought there was mention in this document about trains, trains taking tomatoes.
There was, that was also from the, the farm and preservation plan, that was for the agricultural.
Oh, that was in the ag preservation plan?
Yeah, well, that's right, it probably got repeated in this, but that was what was communicated to us in the ag group.
Um, okay, and Van Highsville, ID number one hundred fourteen. Did we want to make mention in the text there that the present site is Prince of Peace Lutheran Church?
Yeah.
It's not mentioned at all in the ID.
We should mention that, yes. Well, there's nothing else for Scudders Mill or Van Highsville. We can begin to move on, and I'll just lump, uh, the Potpourri category together, the Delaware and Raritan Canal, the Route of Washington's March.
I'd, I'd like, in the paragraph about the Delaware, Raritan Canal, to actually, uh, have a line of overview about, the canal starts here, it goes X number miles, it terminates here.
Put out the.
You know, for context, and also, um, where you mentioned the activities of the state park. Um, I think you should also mention, you know, hiking and bicycling as well as picnicking, jogging, fishing and canoeing. Cause the towpath is, uh, well-known for both hiking upon it and bicycling upon it.
What?
On, on page a hundred, you, you indicate that there's this plaque on Quaker Bridge Road. And you have a picture of it. You might wanna have a little more detail as to exactly where that stone monument is on Quaker Bridge Road.
Yeah. The second paragraph.
Some people might wanna.
Go see it.
Might wanna try to find it.
Actually, go clean it up, too.
We will add a little more of a specific geography where it is.
Have to put longitude and latitude, and you, you can plug it into Google Maps or something.
Yeah.
Entirely different historical question. I understand that the Women's Olympic Crew Team basically is headquartered in Lake Merson.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say that's worth mentioning.
On the West Windsor side, on the West Windsor.
Yeah, right.
That, would that be, we're getting into the appropriate section, other sites, so maybe that's a good place to bring it up.
Okay, so that would be another, that would be one thirty, yeah, one thirty-two then, and that was, I'm sorry, what was the official name of it?
It, it's the, the Women's Olympic Crew Team, uh, is headquartered there. That's where they do their training also.
Some training.
Casperson.
Yeah.
It's that Casperson.
Casperson. Okay. C A S P R S E M.
And if we're gonna do that, then we may wanna add it into like other, other.
Other sites.
Yeah, that, that'll be an ID number one eighty-three.
Yeah, I would add, I would add the Casperson Center, and then with the highlight of the Women's Olympic Crew Team.
They have their, they have their own boathouse.
Yeah.
In addition to that.
We did, we did, we did, we reviewed that.
That was BD to four days. Sadness.
So, and as the aforementioned, mentioning of the, the, the Pennsnack School, that would be in the section, right, David?
Yep, that would be ID number one eighty-two, we wanted that, and we're gonna call that Pennsnack School.
Are you up to one thirty-four?
Yeah, we can get to one thirty-four.
There's just a typo on second to last line, you know, it's, as well as its strong sense.
Oh, yeah, since.
What page?
One thirty-four.
Second to last line should be strong sense of neighborhood.
Since you're already way up there, there's your penultimate word.
Page one thirty-five.
We will, no, no, I, I'm gonna try to sneak it into each plan, just to make sure you're reading it now, though.
So, um, tell me if this is relevant to a report like this or not. For ID number one hundred eighty-one, Glenn Acres. Former planning board member and council member Diane Chaconi did a full documentary on the whole Glenn Acres. And I'm wondering if that's worthy of mentioning.
I would say that isn't.
No, documentary, documentary, the, uh, video, you know, like oral histories and stuff.
Yeah, do you know if that's available?
Yeah, I don't, I, is it, is it online? Is it, is it, is it out there in the web?
Okay, so that's on your website? Actually, the document is.
Okay. Awesome.
Oh, it's not? So the white boundary on that picture is incorrect? Okay. Do you remember that? I'm trying to find the number for where we, that was in the, the Van Highsville.
One.
In Highsville, section?
One fourteen.
Uh, page, page ninety-seven, ID number one hundred fourteen. So the boundary, you'll help Dave with the boundary. So you can coordinate with Paul on the correct photograph and boundary for that one, David?
Okay, yeah, we'll work together.
Dave, on page one thirty-four. Second line from the bottom, on the left side, start a strong sense or sense?
Sense.
Anything else on those historic sites? I know, Paul, I've reached out, he might have another additional couple sites to add, so we'll, we'll provide those for the next draft as well. Okay, if there's nothing else on those historic sites for now, section five are the standard for assessment. And again, this is broken down between the National Historic Register criteria, the State Historic Preservation Office. And then, should the township ultimately elect to adopt an ordinance to declare or designate sites as historic. This would be the evaluation tools that you would use, and it's, again, the same of the National Historic Register. And it's typically towns will adopt that same criteria, so that's, that's par for the course.
And as part of it, you know, when you look at the state register, you wanna put something on it, there, they actually have form sheets and things. Should that be?
Criteria.
Should we note that?
For state historic designation?
Well, if the township, for example, wanted to do something.
Yeah, we can.
You, you know, you would be basically basing it upon what the state really suggested down there, literally, or pages and pages.
Yeah, we can, uh, we can provide a description and need probably a, a website link as well.
Have something on page one forty-two.
Incidentally, I'm right there.
In the second paragraph, second paragraph, second line, you have preservation of the boroughs.
Oh, no.
Sorry.
You saw that from some other document.
I would never, ever, ever.
Also, in the same, same location, six point two land use plan? That title of section six point two.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Well, page one forty-three at the top says land use plan address, addresses.
Oh, and I found one on section six point three.
It is in six point three, the middle says, the plan does include lot twenty-eight, lots fifteen and twenty-one. Like, what is that? Where is that?
Oh, that is, uh, we should add a reference to that. That's the American Property Site or Heritage Village.
You gotta name it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
David, in the last paragraph of six point two, on page one hundred forty-three, there's this sentence. The twenty twenty plan ultimately recommends that planning analyses be conducted for these areas, Marion City, Dutch Neck. In order to develop new and responsive zoning standards, which are more reflective of their existing development patterns. Any status on that?
Yes, uh, we actually have begun the Dutch Neck Planning and Zoning Study.
Dutch Neck.
Dutch Neck, yes, we're doing Dutch Neck first because it's smaller, it's a little bit easier to digest. Uh, at least for us, trying to just kinda work our way through this process. But we have sort of that, so, um, I need to coordinate with Sam for a day to actually walk around the neighborhood, take pictures of houses and coordinate with the police department. So I don't get the police called on me for that.
And then, having, having done that, what would our role be beyond that, you're gathering that information?
Absolutely. So what the, the way that I've structured this planning study so far is that it's going to be a little bit of a history of the area. A summary of its existing development pattern, so, you know, general estimations based on this information, how old certain dwellings are. What are the lot sizes? What are the house sizes? Based on that, and then doing a brief summary of the existing zoning there. And then how certain properties match to the zoning criteria that's required for the three zoning districts in that area.
Are you gonna look at setbacks as well?
Yeah, a lot of it's gonna be based on. Exactly, a lot of it's gonna be based on GIS estimates, so it's gonna give us a rough idea. I, exactly, yeah, exactly, cause otherwise I'd be here and they, I'd get kicked out of the municipal building pretty quickly. No, we're basing it on GIS estimates, I actually already have that information, I just need to put it in a matrix format. And then we'll see what's compliant, what's not compliant, and then we're gonna come up with zoning recommendations based on that. Because what we want to make sure is that we have a zoning approach that's, like it says in here, reflective of that existing development pattern. Doesn't necessarily give homeowners carte blanche to do whatever they want to in that neighborhood. But at the same time, if you have a lot size that requires twenty thousand square feet and your lot size is only three thousand square feet, you're gonna be running into trouble no matter what.
As an area of exploration, I'm not recommending this, I'm just saying, as an area of exploration, is, uh, in those two areas, is form-based zoning going to be considered?
So, hasn't been thought of yet. There may be some consideration and maybe some of the historic pockets there to look at certain design standards.
Yeah.
Nothing set in stone yet for that, though.
I know, you're just starting on.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, and that's certainly something that, you know, when we bring this, and the, the board's role in this will be, uh, I know we're getting ahead of ourselves with this document, but this'll, we're envisioning that this. uh, I know we're getting ahead of ourselves with this document, but this'll, we're envisioning that this Dutchneck Planning and Zoning Study would be adopted as an appendix to the master plan, right, so that would be appendix five, I think we're up to, uh, there's a few appendices there already, so this board will obviously have a lot of input on that. You know, recommendations and, and input on those zoning, uh, regulations that we're proposing. So, design standards like that could be something that's discussed for certain areas of the Dutchneck area. As you go, you know.
Is that, that, I mean, when we did the whole redevelopment area, I mean, there were form-based considerations in that context.
A lot, yes.
So, just, it's just, I'm not advised and not recommending, I'm just wondering if it's gonna be explored.
I think it's something that this board will definitely discuss, for certain portions of Dutchneck, I think when you go further west and north and you get very generally speaking, that's where your newer houses are gonna be located in the Dutchneck area, may not be as appropriate, but maybe for that inner core, looking at certain standards for, you know, fencing, things like that, we don't want a, a strict as a form-based code, maybe it's the regional area. And really, in a traditional form-based code, you're not regulating use as much, you are just the form of the building, and then you let somebody do what they want from the inside.
There's many ways you can do it.
Yeah, a lot of different ways. Anything else regarding, uh, section six, which is impacts of the master plan, we will put in the, the reference to the block 28, blocks 50 to 21, the name of that development.
Yeah, yeah, actually, in, in that section, it's just another typo on the 123, fourth line says the former of which contains to the A barn.
Yep, that's the one I called before, yeah.
Just check anywhere where you have reference to block and lot that it references the actual description. I, we, that one, we noticed that one, but maybe there's others.
Will do.
Anything else on section six? Okay, section seven, recommendations.
Yeah, this one is fairly open-ended right now, but we do have three, three general recommendations, we will remove, remove the TDR one.
So you're taking that out, the first one?
Yeah, we're gonna remove the reference to TDR, but there are other references in the, the policy statement earlier that refers to other design techniques like clustering, I think we should just probably substitute TDR for those other things that were in there.
When, when we say that second bullet, maintain design and citing standards, is there, like, these standards in code, or?
Those would be codification standards, yes, um, so providing and developing, development regulations, it's potentially similarly to what we're just talking about, design standards for, you know, uh, for regulating how certain historic buildings may look, uh, near, especially along roadways.
But we, we don't, we don't have that now.
No.
So, so it says maintain.
Yeah, yeah, it should rather be developed. Developed, yeah.
I would just recommend another, um, another, another recommendation, from my perspective, would be to actually create a historic, uh, preservation commission.
And that was gonna be one of the discussion points tonight, um, I know that the Historical Society wants to speak on behalf of that. Yeah, exactly, yes. So I think, I, I think you got at least one supporter. One of the other things that I also would like to throw out there is working collaboration either with the Historic Commission or the Historical Society to come up with some sort of, unless it already exists, in which case I apologize, but historical biking and walking tour, so something that can link certain historical sites.
They're ahead of you on that, they've already done Dutchneck, you've got Dutchneck done, right?
Forget I ever said anything.
No, no, I know, I think it's great, I think it's great, I'm actually, um, and I, I'm about, the suggestion of, do you have an intern this summer, do you have any interns? Seriously?
I don't know.
Okay.
I'm the intern.
I mean, Michael came up with this idea, and I'm gonna verbalize it, um, in one of the sidebar discussions, this document will last how long after it's adopted?
Um, 10 years.
Okay, so, having said that, uh, Michael had this, and I call it a brilliant idea, that for every property that's listed in this thing, that we put the GPS coordinates, so that they can be found.
I think Alan offered to help me with that project, uh, it is.
I have a lot of free time.
It's, you know, it's something that could be done.
I mean, I'm thinking of, 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 because there's so many locations in this document, that to extend the usefulness of the documents.
Guys, it sounds great, but believe it or not, I have a budget that I have to adhere to.
That's why I asked if you had an intern that could.
Sam, I thought you worked 24 hours.
I do, but David doesn't.
Actually, Paul, if you have any interns helping out with Historical Society this summer, something they could jump in on something like this. Or a Boy Scout, or a scout needing credit, you know, whatever, community credit. This is a community service project. Points for this. They do, that's true, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, the whole nine yards. You are correct. There's possibilities here, that's why I'm saying, there's possibilities for this.
The average person is gonna look at the book, and just see the logic in the letter, what's he gonna do with it?
The average person, I'm thinking the 20s or 30s person, future township residents, Alan, future township residents, we're gonna be more adept technology, they, they might use that to find.
Maybe it could be an appendix side, if we get somebody to do it.
We do, but.
Or it could be a separate document that's not part of this, so I'm gonna get this adopted.
I have an idea, eh, eh, for, as another recommendation, maintain, have a, as another recommendation to maintain a GIS database of historic sites.
Are there any, any security considerations with, with doing that? I mean, a lot of people don't even know their houses on this list.
Not necessarily security now, because a lot of that information is already out there, so this is already from a public book. I mean, you can find basically everybody's tax data as well, already, so.
It just makes it easier, though.
No, if it was an archaeological site, I would, I'd be more inclined to agree, but, so the, the, the recommendation that I'd offered was whether or not it makes sense to, um, develop a GIS database, geographic information science or system of all historic sites and districts, and the question was whether or not that could potentially be a, a security risk or a security concern for certain property owners.
Oh, I have no idea, it's beyond me, it's beyond me.
Yeah, I mean, I can see, you wanna find Gang Farmstead, or, you know, different, different parks, different areas, but I guess people's personal.
Specifics is a property. Okay, well, if.
Where are you listed, they, they dress in this.
If, alright, so, uh, potentially then maintaining a, um, GI, the GIS database of historic sites, should they be preserved by the townships, that would.
Township.
Yeah. Okay. I, well, essentially, we already have these sites identified in a geodatabase, so I actually went through and. Oh no, I would just, yeah, no, yeah, yeah, and, and it was just, that's a recommendation, so we're not gonna do that at this time anyway. Yeah, if, if the township ever wants to put their mapping information online, like some towns will have kind of that, it's a company called Esri, they do online mapping, that's something that can be incorporated into that database with zoning and parcel information, but that's, that's a decision for you guys, not for us, so.
Hey. So I, I think we're done, right, the rest is just appendix?
The rest is appendix, we do have the Historical Society who is here, and I know that they wanted to speak regarding, um, Historic Commissions as well. Regarding Historic Commission, so a recommendation from them to the board to, uh, through adoption by township council ordinance, the creation of a, yeah, well, the, the, the recommendation would be to, for the township to develop a Historic Commission, just so that the board knows, that's, it could be a recommendation of this plan, the formulation of Historic Commission is ultimately a council function, so they would have to adopt one by ordinance, but what they're looking for right now is a recommendation in this document to make that recommendation accountable.
Well, if you're gonna have Historic Preservation Ordinance, don't you, it's a matter of, well, I have to have the Historic Preservation Commission.
You know, I was looking through the municipal land use law, I don't think it necessarily is, because there are due to different sections in municipal land use law, so the formulation of historic sites and districts is regulated by section 42 and 55 D, that's 65.1, and then the formulation of Historic Preservation Commission is section 107.
Yeah.
But it's something I'd like to consult with you more, because I kind of always thought that, and then when I read the municipal land use law, it seemed like doesn't necessarily necessitate one or the other, but clearly, if you do have Historic Preservation Committee, then or Commission, they would be the ones then therefore responsible for reviewing those designations. But I, it's something I would like to go over with you more.
Yeah, since this is just coming up tonight, what, what I would like is like more information, I don't know, you know, like from town to town, some examples of, you know, of what, how it's set up, what the duties are, and or powers, or I would want to know that, have, have more of an idea. Look at that.
And, and as you do that, there's clarification, there's different types of historical committees, am I correct, like Historical Commission, Historical Review?
There's our historical committees.
It deals with architectural elements and, and that type of stuff, and I'm, I bet there's distinctions in that, am I correct, David?
I believe you are correct, there's, I know of commissions and committees.
No, but I think in a, of.
Architectural Review Boards as well.
Yeah, there's Historical Review, like example, Princeton has one, um, but I don't think that's, I don't think that's what.
They are here, so they're, they're ready and willing to speak.
Well, we're done, we're done looking at this for now, so let's hear from the public and, and whoever wants to step up and state your name and address, and let's hear what you have to say.
Good evening, Trevor LaPriveaux.
Speaking the mic.
Trevor LaPriveaux.
Take it out, take it out.
Or lift it up, or raise it.
Good evening, Trevor LaPriveaux, President, Historical Society, West Windsor, I'm a resident, due 20 Meadowbrook Road, West Windsor, New Jersey. I'm glad that this is being presented, this preservation plan, but I do believe a Preservation Commission should be adopted by the council and the mayor in order to put teeth to the preservation plan. Oh, sorry. Are there any questions or concerns about a commission?
No, usually, um, we, we need something, um, like a document, a memo, to say what, what you're thinking is, if you want to do something. Because right now, it's just, it's, it's a concept, but I, I personally wouldn't put it into this document just yet, until I really have much more of an idea of where we would be going with this, and certainly want to, want to hear your, your thoughts, but.
Yeah, well.
I have no idea how we'd set it up and what you're thinking, and it, it takes a little time to absorb it and see how this would work.
Right, and I, I kind of drafted and copied one from Heitstown Borough and shared it with, and, um, we didn't feel, it wasn't felt that it was particularly tailored to West Windsor, so it wasn't included in this proposal, but what we would do is take elements of surrounding, Heitstown Borough has a Historic Preservation, and Princeton has a Historic, and we would take elements from their Historic Commissions charters and develop that to tailor to, because unlike Princeton and Heitstown Borough, West Windsor is such a spread out community that really our Historic Commission would be based on basically villages and maybe sporadic independent structures. Like Grover's Mill, or Penn's Neck, or, or Dutchneck, for instance, sections of Dutchneck would be designated historic, and then buildings within that section of Dutchneck that would be under review when homeowners were gonna renovate or either tear down a property, it would be, it would be a review by that commission.
Yeah.
And that commission would not be binding, in, in some of the wording, which I wish I could have sent to you, but I've decided not to put it forth, that although the commission's findings are not necessarily law, somebody could say, okay, the commission recommends wood for inciting, and homeowner says, well, that's a nice thought, but I want six inch siding, vinyl, they don't have to follow. It's the commission's job to make recommendations, to oversee changes in the township, and it's up to the homeowner, individual homeowner, whether or not they want to follow those guidelines. That's, I, I wish I could have presented the document, but it wasn't being what I, you know.
If the board is interested, I didn't want David to go through a whole memorandum and taking time and money to come up with the differences for Historic Preservation Commission or Committee or any of that, unless there was a consensus on the board, that that was even something that the board was considering to put in here as a recommendation, and again, as it was said, any recommendation in here would have to be, the mayor's office would have to authorize staff to come up with the ordinance to implement it and bring it in front of council and so forth.
I mean, it doesn't have to be in the recommendation in this, you can directly go to the council and the mayor and ask them, but I would like to better understand.
I would like to ask you, would you like to set up?
My first reaction is if my house, my house was listed on that, my antenna will go up. Oh, some unknown person in 10 years from now will tell me, oh, you can't do X, Y, Z. There will be a lot of opposition from people whose houses are included on that list, so I would like to better understand exactly what you have in mind, and what you can and can't do, see, even if you say it's just a recommendation, it's just the homeowner has to spend a lot of time, effort, and money to go in front of you, or whatever the body is, that's one additional step required to do anything above and beyond what they have to do under our existing ordinances.
It would, it would be an additional step, yes.
That's a, that's a philosophical thing, that immediately somebody's house is listed would worry that, oh, what he can or can't do in future.
The house would only be listed with the residence knowledge, like if we went into Grover's Mill and said, okay, we want to take from this line, you know, a square, and say this is historic, the residents of that area have to be notified, and they have to come to a general, a public meeting, and 51% have to agree, is how these are usually done, to be a historic district, so it isn't, it, it isn't like the commission mandates historic districts, it's also with agreement with the public.
See, that, that, I mean, first time I heard is only a few days ago. First time I heard of that concept is only a few days ago, so I would better like to understand before I say yeah, nay, maybe so.
Yeah, well, I could get you a further example.
Right, a lot of both philosophical and practical issues involved in implementing that, as you yourself said, the township is so vast and so many different things, right?
Right.
So, that, that's, that's the thing I would like to understand before, and the council and the mayor can do it, whether it's in this document or doesn't, it's not in this document, so I mean, I don't necessarily want David to spend time and money now to come up with a long report before I even understand whether that's something that philosophically I don't have any problem with.
Okay.
Yeah. And the biggest thing is, the people who live in those houses, they would, this is just one more fight I'll have to pick.
Mayor, it's not just them, it's the subsequent owners of those.
See, that, that's, yeah, and what the effect of that designation on their price when they sell, I mean, there are a lot of issues that need to be well thought of before we go ahead and implement such a commission, and I don't know how Princeton works, when I, I just Googled and they do have one, I just saw that they do have one, I didn't know about Heitstown, so I'll look up how they work and stuff, and then we can decide how it works for West Windsor.
Okay, that, that, that's fine.
So just so I understand, Mayor, then you're asking the Historical Society to provide some sort of documentation to your office for you to be able to speak to the council about?
At least, I mean, I can sit down, you don't have to, I can sit down.
I'm willing to work with you. Documentation, and then, we can look at other towns, and then there may be sections of other towns that don't apply to West Windsor.
Right.
You know, because we're, we're not Princeton, we don't have Nassau Street, we don't have a main street, we don't have a facade to protect, we have individual homes.
One of the ones I would recommend checking out for everybody would be Tana Fly Borough, Upper Berwick County.
I mean, it's, it's not. I mean, it's it's not as far, Sam, didn't the residents of Barian City wanted some kind of guidelines? This was two, three years ago, we had that discussion.
You mean about a uh architectural guidelines?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's something that Dave and I are going to work on next year when we do the Barian City um planning study to talk about that, because a whole ordinance was written and we started working on architectural guidelines, but Mayor Shea did not want to move forward unless a majority of the community was on board, and we we couldn't get a majority of the community.
Yeah, I mean, conceptually, it's very similar to what you are recommending.
You need a majority consensus of the people in that area, yeah.
Because after I got elected.
But if they did accept that.
Right.
Then that would be where the Historic Preservation Commission would then oversee and evaluate.
Right.
That that's where the importance of the commission would be, instead of putting it off to the zoning or building department to make those decisions.
You've mentioned Barry, you've mentioned Barian City. You've mentioned Barian City.
Barian City is an example.
You've mentioned Barian City, Grover's Mill, Dutch Neck. Are there other areas of the township that are of your concern?
Well, what's left of Edinburgh.
Edinburgh.
Edinburgh as historic. Of course, Clarksville really isn't much now except shopping malls and a future development of what kind I don't know. I won't get into that.
What about Port Mercer?
Port Mercer, what do you, what's your opinion on Port Mercer?
Port Mercer is certainly been written back, I mean, right, right now, you've been within this historical society, our idea about what this issue should be very conceptual, it's not that bad. Port Mercer has the application of overlapping all the paths, you know, parts of the forest and that, it's also with this gallery, right, where it comes to our district. But if it's something that could be explored, you know, we feel like right now, it's actually something that could be explored, that, you know, we need to expect it to be explored.
So so what like what is one of the ultimate goals? Is it that we don't want people in the older houses to knock, ever knock them down or or we we want certain architectural standards for the period of house?
Mainly to keep the architectural street view recommendations for the house. Most, what I read from Heitstown and others is that if you want to remodel your kitchen in your house and put granite and stainless steel, that's fine, go ahead, but if you want to redo the front porch, there's an old porch or there's lighting or sidewalks or it's to maintain a community that aesthetic. That that's what it's really for, and the commission would look at individual properties too and be advised on the um state and the national register. You know, people could come, people write us and email us all the all the time, asking us questions about their homes and how old they are and is it worth preserving? And we just don't have the time and the ability to go and do paperwork and research. But there is an interest in people wanting to preserve their homes. I know a lot of community members in Dutch Neck are very particular about keeping Dutch Neck looking like Dutch Neck. They don't want it to change. And they would probably be fairly receptive to having a historic district. But Barian City, like you just mentioned, they might be against it because they feel that they wouldn't be able to do what they wanted with their homes. So there there is a flip, there there's there's two sides to every story, but I think my opinion was is Sam and you know, you've done an excellent job about forwarding the historic preservation element to the master plan. I just feel that a commission would help further implement their plan.
But if the ordinance is adopted, then all the all the communities will be affected, whether Barian City or Dutch Neck, right?
No, no, particular neighborhood.
Yeah, not true. So I mean, if neighborhood objects to the ordinance, then how are you going to?
It it all kind of, it it all kind of depends on how the orders.
We have to all agree to do it.
This means happy, all agree, all all neighborhood.
Those communities would have to have a mature.
Say, no, we don't, man, then what happened?
They don't have.
But that that's if you create historic districts, okay? You have historic districts where you have the concentration of historic homes. In this town, we have a few sites, but again, they're disparate parcels. So I think more or less to be looking at the individual homes, you know, do they conform to a certain style? Now, you can go really crazy with the commissions where you say, oh, you know, we need, you know, you can't use party plank. You have to go back to the original wood. Well, you know, the party plank basically provides the same look as what you have. You have to be kind of flexible in that. You're an architect, you know, there are different ways that you can prepare things. You can go really authentic or you can do a reasonable, reasonable way there, right? And you know, from my perspective, if you want to get anything, you want to have any kind of preservation, you really have to, it has to be looser in terms of you can't go, well, they didn't use this in seventeen hundred.
Yeah, otherwise people get turned off immediately.
Yeah, exactly. You can't be, you know, we're going to go back to the nails that they used. I mean, candlelight.
Yeah, I'm thinking about it.
So what what I'm saying is, it can be as strict or as loose as you want. You want people to buy into into it, I think it really has to be a reasonable accommodation to those homeowners. And there are various kind of things that can be in the commission.
And to piggyback off of what Trevor was saying, there there and Alan as well, there's always different ways to structure these things, and some towns, for example, if you're in Cape May, you know, essentially every site is going to go through that type of review. The example I would really recommend that everybody look at, again, is up in Bergen County, Tannafly, one of the towns that we work with a lot. Um, they have a historic commission up there, and I just want to read to you what the process is, is referral from the planning board and zoning board of adjustment. The planning board and board of adjustment shall submit to the Historic Preservation Commission a copy of every application submitted to either Board for Development in historic zoning districts or on historic sites designated on the zoning or official map or in any component element of the master plan. The Historic Preservation Commission shall provide its advice, which shall be conveyed through one of its designated members or staff to testify orally at the hearing on the application and explain why written reports may have been submitted. So there's different ways to structure that. Um, you can require a historic commission review based on anything that's designated on the zoning map as a historic site or historic district, so it wouldn't be a municipally wide historic commission review.
Right, I mean, or or it basically just be like another, like we have the Environmental Commission comment on on an application or even the Affordable Housing Committee was reviewing applications, and that's essentially then that their review doesn't come back to to us, so that's another way to do it certainly.
I grew up in Bethesda, Maryland, product of the nineteen fifties. Um, and I've I have good memories of of neighborhood and sense of place. And and uh it's hard to go back. I will be going back in October for my fiftieth high school reunion, but it's hard to go back there because the land has become, the land where residential properties are has is more valuable than the structure upon it, as a result, as a result. Uh, without any type of regulations from a dysfunctional planning board in Montgomery County, Maryland. Um, uh, there, there are no real regulations on what a homeowner can do on their property. The zoning is not that strong, other than bulk zoning, bulk zoning. So as a result, old residential neighborhoods with good tall trees and everything in that had character have now been replaced with every man, every person building their own castle so that a structure here does not look like the structure or have any sense of context to the street, the neighborhood, or even the house next door. It's a travesty. It's a travesty. And we do not want West Windsor to become like that. We do not want West Windsor to come like that. Um, I going back into the benefits of historic preservation from today, tonight's document. A benefit is by providing a unique and distinctive link to the past. Historic preservation contributes greatly in establishing a community's sense of place. We've gone through many places tonight in in this document, places we've never even heard of. I mean, how many of us knew about Van Highsville before tonight?
Never heard of it.
There, that's my point.
There's a quiz next to me.
Let me, let me, let me, I don't, I I I want my soapbox, I'm going to be done in a minute. So I I think this is very, this is worthy of exploration, this and and yes, I I mean, as Linda has said, you know, we really can't make judgments tonight. The the council needs more information. Linda, I remember back in two thousand and seven, when I presented this idea knowing, having these fears of what was happening in Barian City with the residential properties. I remember bringing it up to the open mic at Township Council back in oh seven, and you know, I remember, Linda, your mom really liked this idea. Your mother thought the idea of historic preservation was in in the township was a good idea.
She was a former women's club River Edge president and everything's.
Where?
River Edge.
Did she do, did she do historic preservation up there?
There was, there was some.
But what what position did she have with River Edge? What was it? What was her position in River Edge?
Well, she was she was president of the women's club.
Okay.
For a few years, and she did every other title, moving the ladders and speaking, you get the job.
But I remember your mother had really thought this was a good idea.
Yeah, no, she's, yes, she would.
Thank you.
Just for the purpose, going on record, Paul Leggity, Two Sleepy Hollow Lane. Um, just another thing to add to that is that, just tying into the sense of place, that's another real big reason why we're interested in the creation of this Historic Preservation Commission, because it's not like, you know, if you know, if you tear down a tree, you can just, you know, replant another one. You know, once these sites are gone, they're gone forever. You 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 can never get them back. Um, and another kind of opportunity that may so a potential opportunity that might come through the designation of historic districts or historic sites is potential grant opportunities, you know, it may be for placemaking like signage or restoration of sidewalks according to what they currently or originally were. There there there's more opportunities beyond just exterior facades that that kind of maintain this sense of place and this unique identity. Because West Windsor, obviously, you know, great school district, great transportation opportunities, but this history itself is also something that's unique and sets West Windsor apart from a lot of other communities, because things like Howard Cox's property, the publisher Raggedy Ann, um, like Widow Bergen's Tavern, like, you know, John Porkman Nash's house, these are elements that are particularly unique to West Windsor that not really anything else is. So I'd add to that as another reason why the kind of adding teeth to the master plan and adding a uh you know, group of people that are dedicated to researching these sites more and and making recommendations. And again, it's not to be all end all, because they'd be simply making recommendations to the planning board would be something that we're advocating for.
Uh, anybody else want to speak? Okay, thank, thank, thank you. Thank you for the work you do too also. Anybody else from the public wish to step up the mic and speak? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I mean, I motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Anna, second by Alan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Um, I think we want to go into a closed session to hear some information that Jerry may have regarding litigation.
One more question before that happens. Can you, can you uh guys say what next steps are we on tonight?
Absolutely, so we will make the edits to this. Um, I can mention, I think there's a couple more sites that we're going to add into the plan as well. Incorporate those edits and we will get a copy of this when uh scheduling works.
David and I will talk tomorrow on how long it's going to take to get those revisions in, and then I'll notice for a hearing for actual adoption of the plan. It'll probably be sometime, I don't know, in the next two or three months. Because we're still working on the conservation plan, the stormwater management plan, the Dutch Neck planning study, so I want to kind of get this finished and done.
Okay, thank you.
Just so we all know, because I know I'm going to shut off the video, we're going to go in the closed session, our next meeting will be June fourteenth. It's the Penn's Neck redevelopment area, it's the concept.
Concept.
Okay. The public meeting's closed as of nine seventeen. Thank you, thank you, everybody. We're going to go into.
Paul, make sure you get, get a copy of this RCA book that we're talking about. If you reach out, if you reach out to the um, the the public relations person at RCA or at the start of Australia, they they can get that book. I think the mayor, the mayor might be going to his office. But uh, yeah, yeah, well, he's probably going to do it to show you what.